I need my mic on the left. We can just give it a little slack.
Please take your seats. I want to welcome everybody to the last city council meeting of 2019. And it's been a real hoot. So, roll call please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisen?
Here.
Mayor Rabeck?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one speaker slip for items not on the agenda. If anyone else wishes to speak on any item not on the agenda, please submit a card. Kevin Pringle?
Hi, my name is Kevin Pringle. I've been a Coastside member for many years here. And I'm trying to get some suggestions or make a proposal to play basketball. This would be for seniors only to play basketball. I played here with the kids and they still play two days a week at the high school, Bill Johnson, at night on Wednesdays. But I can't compete with that anymore. I'm getting old. And we have a lot of people that want to play here in the daytime. One day a week would be great if we could play somewhere between 10:00, 11:00, and 1:00 o'clock for an hour and a half or two hours one day a week. We'd be willing to pay for the lights and sign a hold harmless. We're all this old, we're not going to be, you know, out for revenge if we get hurt. But we still have fun, we still have the ability to play. Currently, we're going over, I've been, for nine years, been going over the hill to play at Red Morton in Redwood City and Menlo Park on Mondays and Fridays. And a lot of us commute. It would be nice to do something on the coast side here. And I've heard that the city would like the school district to loosen up on activities for the city, whether it's sporting events or other things, to open it up when it's free. And that's why I'm here, to get any suggestions from you guys, what to do. I've been to the school district and they kind of, their attitude as well, we've got to have somebody there for $70 an hour to watch you guys. I go over the hill, we don't have anybody over there. We just sign a whole harmless and we play. And we pay pretty much a couple bucks each, $1 at Redwood City and $2 in Menlo Park. It's a new facility. And that covers the lights that we use. So I'm just here for any suggestions where I could go next to maybe get this as a possibility.
I'm sorry, we certainly consider it. We're not allowed to really discuss new items. But why don't you get in touch with a staff member like our city manager and see if we can get the ball rolling there. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I may be able to just make a positive comment without getting into a long discussion. But I certainly will refer the speaker to Deputy City Manager Matthew Chittister, who's also a basketball player. But it is, it is true what the speaker says. As you all know, we had a very successful meets, meeting with the school district about a month ago. It was our first two-by-two committee meeting, we're calling it. And one of the focuses, one of the focused topics at that meeting was the idea of getting into an operational agreement with them so that we could share facilities. And we could share their, use their facilities, they could use ours. And so it is in the spirit of what was being proposed here. The next meeting has not been set, but we agreed to meet every six months. So it'll probably be around the first of April. And the idea is that we're already reviewing template operational agreements. And at a staff level, we do plan on meeting with school staff and starting to work out the details of what an agreement might look like. So when we come back on April, that meeting in April, we'll have something for both the school subcommittee and the council subcommittee to look at. So good things are happening in here and we'll make sure we get in touch with the speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Salume, followed by Jules Sulfur?
Hi, everybody, Merry Christmas. Not Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas. I first want to give my congratulations to the council. It's been a year of hard work. I've sat in the audience sometimes as the only person in the audience. And I know the sacrifices that you have all made. I also think that staff deserves recognition for their dedication to the city of Half Moon Bay. Oh. Don't penalize me for my time. But the coast side is larger than the city of Half Moon Bay. Today, we have challenges that face us all. And these challenges will only get worse in time. Traffic, patched-up infrastructure, affordable housing, careless development proposals, the threat of fire in the eucalyptus, sea level rise, and a sewer plant that's going to have to move are all exacerbated by the fact that we have divided government. I got here in 1989, and like you, I've seen a lot. I have come to the conclusion that it makes absolutely no sense to have half the coast side run by a bureaucracy in Redwood City. I think the county is well-run, but the people who live here will always have more at stake than the bureaucrats there. Right now, the people in the unincorporated area have a diminished voice and no power to govern. If we are going to meet the challenges of the 21st century, the entire coast side must be unified in one city where everyone gets a vote and everyone has a real say in the governance and planning of this beautiful piece of earth. I'm not the only one who thinks this way. We are organizing. In the coming months, there will be a website to start the conversation and to move forward. If you want to help, send me an email at roy@coastside.net. I suggest the city council put this issue on an agenda early next year. Direct staff to study it, conduct an analysis, and present some options. A unified coast side was the original vision of the first city council in 1959. It's time to make it a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roy, for a very interesting idea. Jules Sulfur, followed by Daisy Medina?
Good evening, members of the council. I'd like to put in a plug for something that I know you can't answer on. And it may very well be too late for you to act. But I'd like to see you think about sending a Christmas card as from the city to the Carters. Jimmy and Rosalyn Carter every year send me and my wife a Christmas card. And many of you may find that you're getting Christmas cards from them year after year. And I thought it would be a nice gesture, seeing how he's 95 years old and been in the hospital a couple of times this year, that we make an effort as a city. What you thought of him as president, I don't think is relevant here because he's certainly become much beloved ex-president. And I don't think anybody's done as much as an ex-president as he has. So I think it would be a nice gesture on our part to just say, "We love you." Thank you.
Thank you, Jules. Bob, can we just do it? Can we just send a card to the Carters?
Was there a request for a birthday card? I'm sorry, I missed that. A Christmas card. Okay. I think we could. It would just be from the city.
Sounds good to me.
Without individual people signing it or the city council actually signing it.
Yeah, that'd be wonderful, yes. Very good. Daisy Medina?
Good evening, my name is Daisy Saravia and I'm a 16-year-old student at Half Moon Bay High School. I'm here today to talk to you about some of the work me and my friends have done with the YLI program up at school. This year, we collected 184 surveys from the students at our school. And the survey was based on their point of view on housing, public transportation, and civic engagement. These flyers that I have right here that I'll hand up in a little bit basically are just the data that we collected on their point of view of civic engagement. And on the back, you will see their recommendations on how we can like work together to help solve them. And later on, we were going to make other flyers on the data of housing and public transportation. So right now, I just wanted to hand these out so you guys can see the data we collected. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda? The first item after public forum is the reorganization of this council. And apparently, somebody is going to present something to me.
Harvey?
Yes.
On behalf of the city council, I'd like to present you with the appreciation award for mayor 2019. Harvey has been a great mayor for this city. It's been a pleasure having him up here. The way you've conducted these meetings for the past year has been something that we all hope to model. The way that you've conducted the audience in these meetings is something that we all hope to model. The way that you've listened to your constituents and made sure that you are bringing forth the items that they care about and agendizing them as the highest priority is something that we've all looked at and appreciated. You've made the council look good, you've made staff look good, and we're all very appreciative for the work and time that you've put in in 2019. So thank you so much on behalf of the council and staff. Congratulations on a great year.
Show up and be kind. That's what I've learned from a council member who learned it from a surfer who learned it from a bumper sticker. And I've tried to spend the last year doing just that. It's been an incredible year. It's gone by so fast. I think a lot of you know that one of my highest priorities had been to build some affordable housing, and that hasn't happened yet. But we're working on it. So keep the faith and thank you so much for this honor. The next item on our agenda is a selection of the new mayor. The floor is open for nominations.
I am delighted to nominate our current vice mayor, Adam Eisen, to be mayor.
Do we have a second? Yes?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a second. Is there any discussion? Let's vote on Adam Eisen for mayor. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Aye.
Councilmember Penrose?
Aye.
Councilmember Reddick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Eisen?
Aye.
Mayor Rabeck?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We need to select a new vice mayor. The floor is open for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Robert Brownstone.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Penrose?
Aye.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Rabeck?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The new mayor wishes to make some comments.
You know, I've been, I've been part of council now for three years. And first of all, I wanted to thank other council members for putting this vote of confidence in me. This council in particular, I feel like, is a, is a great team. And I feel fortunate, A, to be a part of it. I also feel fortunate that I am part of it in a city at this time where we get to accomplish what we've been able to accomplish as a council. Staff is a great contributor to this as well, obviously, and has been moving forth with, with some of the things that we have put as our priorities. It is so nice to be a part of something where there is general consensus on how we want to move the city forward. And although we all have different perspectives on maybe how that is, our overall arcing perspective is very similar. And we all have such good hearts and have put in so much time and effort. And it just gives me so much pleasure to be a part of the council side of that. From a staff perspective, I think in the past three years, a lot's changed. We have a new city manager, we have a new law professional on the team. We have hired, what, 12 people in the last year, in the last year alone? So lots of changes. And generally speaking, every one of them seems to be a step in the right direction, from my perspective at least. And I hope everybody else feels that way as well. So our future is bright. I'm very excited. A lot of the priorities that we set previously are priorities that are going to continue to move forward. So it's not like we're going to make a big change. We're going to continue to keep all the momentum that we have. And we've made some great progress on a lot of different projects. Some of the ones that are most near and dear to me are Carter Park, which I think is going to be a great new piece for Half Moon Bay to celebrate in. The bike and pedestrian master plan, a way for us to easily move through the town in a more, in a way that helps hopefully reduce traffic and also allows us to get from point A to point B. And then the affordable housing piece alone is another thing that I think we'll be able to continue to move forward. So I think the future is bright. Our finances are in great, a great place. And the players are all contributing the way that they need to. So it's a great time in Half Moon Bay and we're going to continue it forward. Thank you.
Adam, I present to you the mayor's hat. Let's break for refreshments and we'll come back and continue the meeting, I don't know, 15 minutes?
This is, this is a bunch of stuff. Unfortunately, I mean, this is, this is not, this is not.
Yeah, no, it's going to be 11. Welcome back. I don't know if anybody's still out there.
They're all leaving.
They're all leaving, okay. The next item is MidCoast Community Council update. Claire Toutant?
Good evening, Claire Toutant, MidCoast Community Council. Congratulations, Mayor Eisen. And Harvey, you and I will be the elder statespeople and turn over the work to somebody else. Actually, that's our first item of report tonight, which is, we also have reorganized. And the new chair is Lynn Erickson, who's here tonight. And vice chair is Michelle Weil. And since we do all our own in-house paperwork, we don't have staff, we do have a secretary and treasurer. Treasurer is Tamar Powell, and I'm going to be secretary. So we're looking for a new year. We are patting ourselves on the back for one thing. We are an advisory body, we don't have power, we can't say this is going to happen or not happen. But we do advise, and sometimes it's heard. The proposed RV park at the corner of Capistrano and Highway 1, which has been in the works for a long time. We've been fairly active in trying to talk with the county about our thoughts about how it should be developed, if at all. And at the last minute, at the last planning commission meeting to approve the RV park, they voted to table it unanimously. So we feel really good about that. Our major concerns about it were, first of all, that it's in a scenic corridor and the structure of the park would have blocked views of the harbor and of the ocean. Secondly, it's part of what we were calling the harbor gateway, where the first impressions that people have when they come to visit the harbor right now are of an old boat and soon to be, as proposed, an RV park. And we were thinking that that's not the way we want to present our harbor to people who visit it or work in it. So that was really good. We were really pleased about that. Which, I'll comment on what Roy had to say, just very briefly. We don't have direct representation to immediate local area issues. We do depend on the county. We are an advisory body, we do our best to influence them, and they do their best to communicate with us. I think that we'd be interested to hear what he says. I think we're very distinct communities. I think what we've been trying to do over the last year is to increase our intercooperation with each other, the mid-coast and half-moon bay. We've done a few things together with the library, with emergency services. I think that the perception in a lot of areas is changing, that we are the coast side, we're not just Half Moon Bay and all that other stuff. And that's the direction I think it should be going in, is where we work together, where it's in our common interests, and help each other out. But remain, in my opinion, distinct. That's just my opinion. Besides that, there is a consulting group that the county has hired called Common Knowledge, who are interviewing people in the mid-coast and to some extent, people in Half Moon Bay to get a good perception of what are the interests of the area? What do people think? How do people perceive the community? And how can that knowledge be used to improve services and other issues that involve us all? But mostly the mid-coast, but it's a snapshot of the entire community. So that should be interesting when that comes out. Let's see. There's something else I wanted to say. We're waiting, speaking about things that will be coming out, we're still waiting for the connect, the coast side to come out. Some other transportation things we're waiting for. But I think that's, that pretty much sums up what we're doing at the moment. Are there any questions? Thank you.
It's not a question, but sincere appreciation for everything you did as the chairman of the MCC. So thank you.
Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. She's brought a lot of connectivity from the mid-coast to the Half Moon Bay council. So very appreciative. Thank you for your time. Moving on to mayor's announcements of community activities and community service. Anything to talk about here? No.
Well, Mr. Mayor, since you're brand-new, I'm guessing you might not have anything yet, which is okay.
Okay, good. And then, we didn't have a closed session, but just in case, report out from our recent closed session meetings?
Nothing to report out.
Okay, and then, city manager updates to council?
Thank you, we just have a few announcements tonight, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'll start. I'll start. First, just a reminder to you and the community that City Hall will be closed over the new year. City Hall will be closed from December 24th through January 2nd. About a week and a half period of time there, so that staff can take a much-needed holiday. And then, the first meeting of the year, just as a reminder to you and also the community, is not until January 21st. We only have one meeting in January. I think the schedule for the entire year is actually an item in your packet tonight. But that first meeting is not until January 21st, so we get a nice break there. And then finally, although we've reorganized and we have a brand-new mayor tonight, the previous mayor does get one final, as tradition, kind of item that they're responsible for to end the year, and that is the state of the city. So I want to encourage folks to come to that tomorrow night. It's at the library. It's a year in review. It also, I think, will be looking forward as well as to what to expect in 2020, as has already been mentioned. So encourage people to come. I know the previous mayor is getting ready for it tomorrow night, and we look forward to it. We've done something a little different this year. We're doing it in partnership with a couple other local organizations. And we've really tried to get the word out, to get as many people from the community there. I think it's an important event that we do this every year, and I'm certainly looking forward to it. So that's at 6 o'clock at the library. Give the, give Mr. Rabeck his last chance to give the state of the city. And then our final announcement, we actually have, we have an intern working in Public Works right now. Her name is Kyla Clark. She's a sustainability intern. We are putting a lot of focus on sustainability, it's one of council's priorities. And she's going to come up to the podium and just make an announcement about an upcoming event in January. But I think it happens before your next meeting, so we wanted to get the plug in now.
Thank you for having me. So I'm Kyla Clark, I'm born and raised here. I am getting my bachelor's in sociology at CSU East Bay. But I'm spending a lot of time at the 500 block, because I'm part-time at Cafe Society and part-time at City Hall now. But I would like to talk to you about our Fix-It Clinic. And this is a pop-up event that has volunteer coaches to help participants troubleshoot and fix their items. It's essentially a guided disassembly of your broken things. And we have this Fix-It Clinic coming up on January 18th. And this one is textile and garment-focused. And though many, many of the Fix-It Clinics are more technical, so like repairing cellphones and small home appliances, though for this one, I've already recruited my grandma. And yes, so we hope to get enough people out to this event, as both participants and coaches. And we wish to make this a recurring event on the coast side. And I just think it would be such a beautiful thing to have our coast, our community members get together and help each other while learning a thing or two. I mean, what, what better way to be sustainable and reduce waste than fixing things that you already have? So in addition to this Fix-It in January, we are looking to expand this program and have more coast-side Fix-It Clinics. With the help of the library and its amazing librarians, and the Maker Space and all of its resources. This picture up on the slide is actually from the last year's Fix-It Clinic. And previously, we only have one major coast-side clinic a year. And so we want to expand that and have maybe like a bimonthly clinic to keep this happening. And so for this to happen, we need all of the handy coast-siders that are willing to help. And since it is a season of giving, I have a link on the, on the slide for you to apply to be a coach. It's very easy. And I'd also like to introduce to you Cheryl Hanken, a local volunteer whose passion for Fix-It Clinics and helping others has started this conversation of expanding Fix-It Clinics. And with the help of the Fix-It clout, the Fix-It founder, Peter, she will be leading this upcoming workshop. And so without further ado, this is Cheryl Hanken. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Cheryl Hanken, thank you for letting me speak. I'm, I just wanted to let you know a little bit about me. I'm a retired clinical psychologist, I'm a medical researcher, had my own business for many years in Moss Beach. And now had been looking for volunteer opportunities. Looked, Fix-It Clinics are nationally run. Peter is a local liaison for Fix-It Clinics. I responded to a volunteer match, thank you, I'm short, a volunteer match, and saw Fix-It Clinic advertise needing volunteers and said, "I can do that, but only with regard to textiles," though I know many other things like woodworking, soldering, all kinds of mechanics, really only feel competent. I'm also now a textile artist in my retired years. Well, I should say as of September, in my retired months. The idea came to me during the PG&E shutdowns that our youngsters know so much about technology. And I have to ask my grandchildren, my children and now my grandchildren, to help me with things. But I know so much, as do others. And what would happen if technology were to disappear? Would they know how to sew on a button? Would they know how to make a hem? Would they know how to alter something? 16% according to the Environmental Protection Agency, there's my researcher coming out, 16% of landfill is of fabric textiles. That's a lot. Do we just discard that, or do we do something about it? I also work with a volunteer program that rescues designer fabric and donates it. And this is in Mountain View. So I'm happy to do that. But I also think in the spirit of sustainability, that the intergenerational interaction. I watched middle school come to the library. They play games independently but interactively, which is an odd thing. They're sitting at a long table, they're all interacting with each other silently while playing computer games. And then we have a senior center across the way. And then we have all kinds of resources everywhere, but who's interacting with whom? So I would like to see these Fix-It Clinics help with sustainability of our talents here in Half Moon Bay, as much as sustainability of our materials. And that is resourcefulness, and that is using our resources wisely. So I invite you to come and share your talents and learn. I have much to learn, and it's fun. So this is only two hours, and I will be as much a coach as a coachee. I want to learn more. So thank you for this opportunity, thank you to the city, thank you to the library, thank you to Fix-It, and thank you to all the volunteers, current, future, in this effort. Thanks.
Cheryl, thank you for being such a great volunteer in the community and bringing so much passion to this issue. So thank you. Next, we're going, oh, sorry. Next, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. As you probably all know, the consent calendar, one action is taken for everything on the consent calendar, unless an item is polled by a member of the public or a council member. In this particular instance, we have someone who wants to poll item 1E. So we can pull item 1E, is there anything else from council members that you want to pull? Okay, in that case, do I have a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve the consent calendar. Item 1A, waive reading of resolutions and ordinances. 1B, warrants for the month of November 2019. 1C, treasurer's report for the quarter ending September 30th, 2019. 1D, 2020 calendar of city council meetings. 1F, Matty Act 2020, local appointments list for city boards, commissions, and committees. Item 1G, appointment of a youth representative to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Item 1H, acceptance of public improvements for Phase 3 of the Pacific Ridge subdivision. Item 1I, CPS HR contract for citywide classification and compensation study. Item 1J, Fifth Amendment to lease agreement with Kathy Oler for the use of the 730 Mill Street as a public parking lot. Item 1K, resolution in support of transforming Pacific Gas and Electric into a customer-owned utility.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. All right. So in that case, then, do we go straight to item 1E? John Ullam, would you like to speak on item 1E?
Not ready, I'm not really ready for it, but I'll give it. Two of you weren't here last week, or last meeting when we discussed this. And I think it's, it's a pretty big step that you're taking. And so, you know, I think you should all weigh in on it one more time. From what I could tell from the landlords that were here, most of them thought everything you were up to, you were trying to accomplish was worthwhile, important. But they really objected to the minimum term of the lease, not, you know, being required to be a year. Before I forget to say it, one of your staff members said something very confusing about that at the time, saying, "It really wasn't that way, that the tenant had some sort of options for a lower term." So I hope you'll discuss that, so that that can be made clear, is what does the rule really mean? And last, you know, most of those landlords that we have here are mom-and-pop shops. They're not people who are fabulously rich, they're not people who have staff that go and do this stuff for them. I had opportunity to work for about 20 years and worked a lot in refinishing apartments, working in stuff. You have no idea the risk that a landlord takes every time they sign a lease with somebody. I have seen things that made me puke. I have seen things that my guys went into to clean up because the tenant destroyed the property, and they wouldn't do the job. I had one guy quit, he just wouldn't do the job, he would not go in there. I remember a woman from Oakland, grew up in Oakland, grew up in the projects, did well, got her degree. And she invested all kinds of money into a property up in Berkeley. I mean, it was beautiful, I was part of rehab. She called me up a year later, they had a party the last night there. Tens of thousands of dollars of damage. So what you need to understand is every time a landlord takes, signs a lease with somebody, they're taking a huge risk. And one of the things that they pointed out was is that not everybody is going to pass the credit test. And I know all you have never had a problem with credit, but I have. Things have been hard times, you know, we've been perfect. And landlords have rented to me anyways, because they said it's month-to-month, want to get to know you. I'm a good guy, I pay my rent, don't tear the place up. After a few months, it was, it was a done deal. No one ever really needed to get involved in that transaction, that was just too much nanny stating. I would have resented it then, I think that landlords resent it. No, I don't think that they're given credit for the amount of investment they put into the communities, the risk they take, the hassles that they have to deal with. And then they're vending, you know, then people hate them, the landlords. So I would like you to reconsider that part of the rule, that maybe we could consider, maybe that this minimum lease thing might come back to bite some people in the butt. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you for your comments. City manager, do you care to elaborate on that a little bit? And possibly even, if we have to go to the lawyers?
Yeah, we can do a couple things, Mr. Mayor, and, and since you weren't here, and Councilmember Ruddock likewise was not here. I'll, I'll start just by clarifying the first point the speaker made. And then, I would say if the council does want a brief, just kind of overview, either Catherine or Jill could also do that. But I'll buy them some time to get ready for that and answer the first question. So I think the speaker was referring to, and it's, I think it's pretty clear in the ordinance, but it certainly came up as a question, and there were some examples given, or some, maybe the, some members of public that spoke were confused on whether or not the one-year lease term would apply to certain examples or situations that they gave. And so, in general terms, the ordinance requires that the landlords offer a one-year term. The person, the prospective tenant that they are making that offer to can then turn down that offer, and they can then mutually agree to something shorter. As long, the requirement is simply that the landlord make that offer initially for a one-year term, and then if they say, "Well, I don't want a one-year term, do you do six months?" They could then mutually do a six-month lease. A couple of examples that came up, that people made statements, and again, I think maybe there was some confusion on how that would apply. One person, for example, said, "Well, what if I wanted to rent my place to a family member? Apparently, I can't do that." Well, of course, they could, because if the family member only wanted it for six months, they would know that. And the landlord would say, "Well, I'm going to offer you a year." Of course, the family member says, "I only want to rent the place for six months," and they could make that agreement, it would be perfectly within the ordinance. Another example was given for teachers, who may only want to rent a place for nine months, let's say. And the thought from the speak back two weeks ago was that that, that couldn't work. And of course, it could, because again, the landlord makes an offer of one year, the teacher says, "Hey, I get summer vacation, I only need to be there nine months, will you do that?" And then they could make a mutual agreement to do that. So that, I think, clarifies the first question that I heard. Maybe that's enough. If you have any other questions, again, for the benefit of the mayor and Councilmember Ruddock, either Catherine or Jill could maybe provide, answer other questions or provide just a very brief overview before you move forward with the second reading.
So I'd be interested in a brief overview from staff over the issue of evictions. So if somebody's offered a one-year lease, they accept, and there's trouble. You know, what's the ability to evict at that point?
Right, and I can address that, and I'll ask Jill if there's anything I've missed. So there's nothing in here that requires a landlord to keep a bad, bad tenant who's breaking the lease. So if six months in, tenant has done things that are contrary to the lease, there would be, you know, obviously cause to evict. One of the benefits of the, or the ordinance was, I think it actually was appreciated by pretty much every speaker at the last meeting, was that it also provides mediation services. So if there, if there is an incident, be it in month one or, or year, you know, 10, there's opportunities for either the tenant or the landlord to invoke these mediation services, which will be provided by the city for, for everyone. Not just ones who'd come under the, the terms of this new ordinance, but everyone in the city will have the option of, of taking advantage of these mediation services. And Jill's sitting up, and I'll ask if there's anything else to add? No? Okay.
I'll, I'll just add one more comment, and that is, is that, just to be clear, after that first year is up, the question was about eviction, but kind of a related question, or I think theme that might have came up two weeks ago, was, you know, what happens after that? And the ordinance is written in such a way that at that point, the landlord, it keeps cycling, and the landlord then is required to offer another year and so forth. And at that time, the same thing could happen. So for the first year, a landlord could offer a year, the tenant takes it, and then that year comes up, the landlord then is required to offer another year. At that point, the tenant could say, "Well, now I only need six months," and they could mutually agree on that.
Any other clarifying questions? Yeah, please.
I just want to say, so I, you know, I did read the item before the last meeting. Then I had a work-related challenge, and that's why I couldn't attend. But I did watch the meeting tape as well. So I did see the items that were on the agenda and basically understand what I would be voting for tonight, so.
I have one last clarifying question, if you guys don't mind. So what's, what's the proof, what's the burden of proof to show that somebody's offered a year-long as opposed to a six-month? How does that work in terms of conflict or mediation?
Jill, do you want to remind me, I believe it has to be in writing?
Yeah, my understanding is that we would be responding to concerns about this, complaints about this, and looking for, putting together a written record to see if there was a need to refer folks to mediation, and remembering it's non-binding mediation, paid for by the city, conducted by a third party that is, specializes in mediation. So, it's not staff doing the mediation. Okay.
It does, and I would point you to the ordinance on Section 7.7020, Section of Minimum Lease Terms, which does say that, basically, if the tenant accepts the offer of a written lease, which has a minimum one-year minimum lease term, the acceptance must be in writing. So, that is, you know, in order to ensure that there is a record, that that, you know, offer and acceptance has been in writing.
Is there anything else before we vote on the issue?
I just want to say that I don't see this as intended to hurt landlords. It's not punitive. Housing is a social good, and we have a crisis of housing in California and in the United States of America, and we have an imbalance in the distribution of wealth, and part of our job as city council members is to balance, to the extent we can, without infringing on people's rights, the burden related to providing these public goods. So, I think that the state and the city has struck a good balance here, and I'm going to support it.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion, then?
I move that we waive second reading and adopt an ordinance enacting Chapter 7.70, Residential Rental Security Measures of the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to ordinances and public hearings. For ordinances to the public hearings, we open this to the public before we hear of anything, or do we ask you to report out first?
So, our format will be a brief presentation tonight, because this is an item that was heard recently. It's an extension of that, and then, you're correct, this is a public hearing item. We'll make sure that the public has time to speak before you deliberate and make a decision. This item tonight is a follow-up from your special meeting on December 5th, where Council adopted an interim urgency ordinance related to ground floor uses on four blocks of Main Street between Correia's and the Main Street Bridge. This will be a very brief staff report. You had an in-depth report at the last, at that special meeting, and per your request, I can dig into it, but I think you have a heavy agenda, and I think you've got lots of background on this at this point. I do want to make sure that we will dwell on next steps, to make sure everyone knows what happens next, and again, that you have a public hearing with this item. So, on December 5th, Council adopted the urgency ordinance, which can be put in place for 45 days, and the ordinance was to, it restricts ground floor uses on those blocks of Main Street that I referred to, from new uses coming in that are not defined per definition that you had in the language, and it's before you tonight again, as being active, ground-floor dependent uses. We're focusing on retail, restaurants, galleries, certain kinds of personal service uses that are consistent with Main Street, and this is in response to concern that we have had about conversions to office space and some real gaps in the Main Street fabric. That is all that this ordinance does. It's really narrow, and you are being asked to consider extending it. Councils are allowed to extend urgency ordinances for 10 months and 15 days, which would be tacked on to the end of the 45 days, so essentially, a one-year time period. There's also the potential option in the future, should you need to consider one additional one-year extension. The urgency ordinance is meant to give the city time to implement the follow-up, more comprehensive approach to zoning, which is basically your police powers for land use. And fortunately, we've been already working on it. So, just noting that, back in July, we had a study session with the Planning Commission that went into quite a bit of depth on a fairly comprehensive look at how to give a lot of carrots to the kind of development that you're interested in in your town center, specifically mixed-use development that has not been able to move because a number of constraints in the city's code, especially the parking code. So, the Planning Commission, then, the very next day, after you adopted the urgency ordinance on the 5th, the packet for the Planning Commission went out for that item with the draft ordinance. So, the Commission has actually already had a public hearing on it. That was on December 10th, and they had a very good discussion, and it was a late night, and we all agreed that it was a good idea to continue the item, to give people more opportunity, to give input, and they asked me to come back with a few other options for them to consider, and these are things that I have experienced with in coding, as well as reaching out to colleagues of mine who do codes like this. So, that will be back to them at their first meeting in January, January 14th. They continue to a date certain. We will make sure to continue to get that word out through the Downtown Business Association, our e-news, and other matters, but, and then after that, we would bring their recommendation to you, which could be as early as February, but certainly in the first quarter of 2020. And then, of course, because this is zoning code, the other next step has to be certification by the Coastal Commission. So, that's what's ahead, and it's actually already, you know, happening, and the urgency ordinance is giving time for the Planning Commission to complete their work before changes happen in the field, and it gives you time when it comes to you. So, the item, specifically, the recommendation is here, it's to extend the ordinance, and then to direct us to continue to work with staff and bring that back to you, and also have that public hearing before you have your discussion, and your city attorney can answer any questions about the urgency ordinance and how specifically urgency ordinances work, and I'm happy to talk about the zoning side of it and the content and what we're looking at here. So, thank you.
All right. Before we go into public comments on this, or we open that up, is there, are there any clarifying questions anybody wants to ask before we go into that?
I would just like it if also the city attorney weighed in on the legality and the use of these sorts of ordinances. I think that would be helpful for the commenters and the public generally.
Sure. So, there are a few things about these types of ordinance that I should point out sort of procedurally, and then we talked a little bit about your question. So, procedurally, these types of ordinances require a four-fifth vote of the Council to take effect, and if approved, they go into effect immediately. So, when the Council acted two weeks ago on the first, basically, 45-day enactment, that went into effect immediately, and likewise, this extension would go into effect immediately without having the typical, you know, 30-day effective date and subsequent certification. So, these ordinances are typically used in contexts like this very one that you have before you, where the city is considering a planning issue, a zoning issue. These are specific to zoning issues. So, they're, I've seen them used in a variety of different contexts, short-term rentals, setbacks, accessory dwelling units. I've seen them used to temporarily prohibit charter schools in order to basically give some time to consider traditional regulations on charter schools, and they really are to simply freeze in place. So, it's a very narrow action to allow time to study an issue. So, this, of course, is sort of a classic case, because the Planning Commission actually already was studying the issue, but because you need to go through the various steps, you know, to enact an ordinance, and then it actually takes even longer here in the coastal zone, because we have to get things certified. It is, you know, important to act this way, and the urgency findings that are in the ordinance reflect all of those facts specific here, and then, of course, the facts that Jill pointed out at the last meeting in terms of existing vacancies in this heritage downtown, inquiries, as well as listings, as well as recent conversions of open spaces, of open, you know, units that have gone to office uses. And I guess I would just point out one more thing, and it came up at the last meeting, but it does support the urgency, which is that, once the use is converted to an office use, it then, even with the new ordinance, will become legal non-conforming, and would essentially need to be, you know, phased out over a long period of time. And it is, it is challenging, the law is very protective of legal non-conforming uses, such that it would most likely be attrition that would phase out those uses unless the city did, you know, took additional actions, which are not, you know, before you hear. So, that was important to act, to prevent that, you know, legal non-conforming status from taking place while the city was working on the planning issues.
Legal non-conforming is lawyer speak for grandfathered.
Correct. Thank you.
Anything else before we open up? All right. I hereby open the public hearing. We have one card. This is for Item 2A, John Ullam. If anybody else would like to submit a card, now is the time to do it.
John Ullam, Half Moon Bay. Well, Ms. Ekis kind of took all the air out of my argument, she came up and explained things to me. So, I guess I'm left with, I'm wondering how it is that this thing got portrayed as being, you know, what it was in the paper, as being aimed directly at Ms. Donlap, and that she wasn't going to be able to open up her business. And so, I looked at some of the quotes, and I, you know, read some of the statements that were in the reports, or the staff reports from the newspapers. One of the council members spoke about my vision, and added that they would not grandfather this business in like Donlap's, which were established before the city decided to abruptly change. Now, I know this is all out of a newspaper, and we know that reporters don't always care to get the whole story, they just want a story. So, I'm thinking maybe this is just a little bit over the top, maybe this reporter didn't get it right. And then I looked at another newspaper, and the same council member, again, states they did not want an exception in the ordinance for this existing business. "I'm very concerned about this concept of grandfathering, because one of the businesses is on a key corner of our Main Street. I don't want to lose the option of a diner with a takeout window, or a restaurant, or retail in the future." This is the key words. "I believe the community can make those decisions about their values for downtown, and what they want to see there." And then they finish up, "My vision is not a law office." I don't know anything about the community vision. I don't know what people really want downtown. I can tell you, I was a retailer for 15 years downtown, and it's freaking tough. This town's just weird. It's in a weird location. We make it impossible for the residents to shop here. We want nothing but visitor servicing businesses, which is contradictory to the problem that we have with too many visitors and too much traffic. You know, you talk about the retail landscape, and it's mentioned in this story, the hypocrisy of it, that City Hall is the biggest eyesore on Main Street, next to the building that isn't there, just to the north of you. And so, you know, I want to ask yourself, why aren't people investing in Half Moon Bay? This is the greatest economy we've ever had, and it is. And so, you know, everybody's got a job, they're giving away money at the Fed, hell, they're going to pay, you got to pay to store your money pretty soon. So, people got money to invest, but they're not investing it here. Why is that? You businessmen aren't stupid. You're a businesswoman. If there was money to be made, and there's opportunity to be exploited, someone would be exploiting it, but they're not. So, maybe times have changed. You know, maybe retail is just not going to work on Main Street anymore, and you're going to have to start facing that. I faced it, you know? It's like when I was, when I realized that I was up against Toys R Us, and even they can't make money doing it, then how am I going to survive it? I know I've talked a little bit long. Last thing is, I would have you look at the staff report from the December 5th meeting. One of the things that says in there is, speaks about another business who had, they said, "Fortunately, this business owner is sensitive to the fragility of Main Street." Well, this implies that Ms. Donlap is not sensitive to, and if you'll read the story in the review, you'll see that there are people in this community who refer to her as a greedy lawyer, who hasn't contributed to our community. And I think where all that's coming from is just miscommunication, apparently, because apparently, none of this ever happened. Apparently, she is able to open up a shop, her lawyer's business there, and there's nothing stopping her from doing that, and that these comments by the council member were just, I don't know, they weren't representative of what was facts. And so, I think you should look a little bit at how you say things, how you portray things, ask yourself why things are the way they are. We had a pro property rights council for a long time, now we got something else, but there's still a lot of vacancies on Main Streets, a lot of buildings that are in disrepair, and it's still a very hard town to make a living in. So, I wonder if you really know enough to be making these kinds of decisions. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Next is Paul Gogorov.
Good evening, councilors. Just to follow up on John's comment, I gather that what this interim enactment is going to do is stop the clock and give time for this issue to be considered. I looked at the very informative staff report only briefly before I came to the meeting tonight, but it looked like the tipping point had already been passed in most of the numbered blocks. In other words, the small business retail use had already been pushed aside, or was already dominated by parking lots, driveways, non-consumer-oriented, public circulation uses. I think it would be great to have more of a time dimension on this. How did this come to be? How long, over time, taking a one, two, five-year horizon, what did the use profile look like at that time? And I think John said, you know, if the market isn't working, what makes us think that we can intervene and run the market better than the invisible hand, if you will? I think you have to take that very seriously, and look, and perhaps get some input. I'm surprised, one thing I didn't see in the staff report was any input from the owners and/or operators of these businesses along Main Street. What do they think about this? I don't see any of them here present. It would be nice to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I am going to, oh, I'm going to close the public comment period. Back to council.
Yeah, I'm going to double down and say that I support this ordinance, and there are good reasons to support this ordinance, and contrary to the uninformed commentary in our local newspaper, the reporter was actually at the meeting, so I was surprised to see the content of this commentary, given that the story was laid out. In fact, it was laid out long before the December 5th meeting. The Planning Commission and the City Council have been talking about revitalizing downtown for a long time. There have been numerous public meetings, and lots of opportunities for public input on the policies that are under development. The paper inferred that there was, that this is a surprise, that we surprised everybody, that... That's just absolutely false. This process has been going on, has been noticed for a long time. It's been in the paper, it's been on Nextdoor, it's been in the community news. So, you know, we're not going to spoon feed this stuff to you, even though we have effectively in our communications process. You have to pay attention to what's going on. You have to show up at meetings and you have to provide your input, you know, when there's the opportunity to provide that. So I'm not buying this business about we've surprised people and there's been no opportunities for input. It's just plain BS. And, you know, our staff has been working lovingly, and our Planning Commission has been working lovingly on the development of our LCP update now for several years. So to impugn the integrity of our staff, who's been working hard on this issue for a very long time, makes me upset. It's unfounded. So I'm not having a lot of sympathies for the arguments either in the newspaper or by, you know, these Monday morning quarterbacks on the issue of the LCP update. It's all out there for you to see. It's absolutely transparent. So, and by the way, I did not talk about a brew pub on the corner. I talked about a diner with a takeout window. And the context was a personal conversation with the property owner in the room, talking about where I was coming from, so I could make it concrete for her, so she didn't see that it was out of animus about, you know, what we were doing and why I was feeling the way I was feeling. So may have been taken out of context. I don't control those sorts of things, but I just want to leave you with this message. This City Council is the most transparent the City Council has been in decades, and we're offering it up to you, you know, every week in a variety of forms. So don't tell us that we're not telling you what's going on. We're doing a good job with respect to our communications, and we're doing a good job with our Planning Department and City Hall. So thank you for listening, and I'd like to move forward and pass this ordinance.
Would anybody else like to comment on this one or offer a recommendation?
I'll make one comment. I thought the comment from the public, Mr. Gogoriev mentioned that we haven't heard from store owners, and there has been outreach, but, yeah, getting a dialogue, not just, I think, from store owners, but from owners of the building, landlords. When I see a lot of empty space, I have a lot of questions. Is it that people don't want to open businesses, they feel the rents are too high, et cetera? You know, what's, what's the owner of the building thinking about? So I think it is an opportunity. We have a number of groups now in the city of business owners, Business Association, we have the Chamber. And I'm not quite sure how much people actually reach out to the building owners to get their input also as to what their incentives are motivating for keeping a space boarded up or not. And I think if we engage all stakeholders and get a better view, then we've got options that we can incentivize what we're really looking for to support the vision that we have for our community downtown. Thanks.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that the Chamber, Chrislin has been fabulous at reaching out to businesses and doing surveys and hearing back from businesses about what they envisioned for downtown. And Chrislin's been very good at sharing that with council and with city staff. So the information is there. Like Councilmember Ruddock said, come to the meetings, speak up. I'd also like to move, make a motion.
So the restrictions on ground floor retail on these small few blocks, we don't envision this as the answer. This isn't the solution to downtown vitality, but we know from looking at other cities that without ground floor retail and continuous ground floor retail, you don't get foot traffic and you don't get a vital community. But that's not the only piece of this. The other piece is we're going to be trying to bring housing downtown, which will help with the vitality piece, and we'll also be trying to relax restrictions on things like parking and some of the other development restrictions that may disincentivize people from investing in downtown. So we're looking at it comprehensively, a set of policies that will get at the issue of investment and vitality. And they discussed the parking piece at the last Planning Commission meeting. We're going to be looking at developing Carter Park, more events. So it's a comprehensive approach. We don't, we're not stupid to think that only the ground floor zoning is going to make the difference. And if you're following the LCP update, especially with our policies relating to the downtown, you'll see that this is a comprehensive holistic approach. And, you know, who knows? It may not work. We might go into a recession, but we're going to be, you know, developing the blueprint and, you know, stating the vision in a way that hopefully attracts people. And, but we're not stupid enough to think that, you know, may or may not work, but we have to take steps to give it the best shot, and that's what we're doing.
I support the ordinance. I believe we're about the only city in the county that doesn't have the equivalent kind of ordinance to encourage downtown vitality. So we're talking about four blocks here. Nobody is saying that law offices and real estate offices can't exist. We just need them to either be on the second floor or one block over. This is a small step toward increasing the vitality of downtown, and I support this ordinance.
Okay, I'd like to move that we extend an interim urgency ordinance, 2019 Heritage Main Street Interim Urgency Ordinance for 10 months, 15 days, to provide adequate time for Coastal Commission certification of follow-up zoning text amend... and direct staff to bring forward zoning text amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second. All right. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you for seconding that one. May we have a, do we need, do we need a roll call or can we just?
For the lead pass.
Roll call vote for this one? Yeah. May we do a roll call vote for this?
Councilmember Penrose?
Aye.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruddock?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you all for your comments. Next, we are going to get into our business items. We're going to start off with the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year end June 30th, 2019.
Mr. Mayor, I'll kick this one off. And members of council, members of the public, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned a little earlier tonight that we have 12 new employees this year. That's about, oh, over 30% of our workforce. So it is an interesting time. We have been in transition, and we have a lot of great new employees, many of which are local. So it's my pleasure tonight to introduce, I'm just going to introduce one of our new employees because then she gets to introduce the second new employee. Lisa Lopez is our new Administrative Services Director. You have met her before. She's been here a few months now. She's also, as I understand it, going to be moving over to Half Moon Bay very soon in the new year. Very exciting. Administrative Services Department is a very important department in the city. She's in charge of finance, very important. Human resources, people, very important. And IT, also very important. So she's here tonight. I think this is her first presentation, or she's going to give an introduction to one of our newest staff members in that department on our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, as you mentioned, or as we call it, the CAFR. This is something we're required to do each year at the end of the year. So with that, since this is Lisa's first time, I wanted to make that introduction, and I'll turn it over to her.
Yep, got it. Thank you, Bob. And thank you, Mayor Eisen and councilmembers, for allowing us to come tonight to do this presentation. To my right, I'd like to introduce Kenneth Stiles, who is the Senior Accountant now for the City of Half Moon Bay. Fortunately, Kenneth and I came in just at the tail end of the development at the CAFR. And I say fortunately because we were involved enough to learn a lot about the city's history in developing this report. And as you all know, to be successful in the present and to look forward to a great future, you need to know its past. So this report has actually done that for Kenneth and I in terms of learning about Half Moon Bay, our finances, where we need to go, and what we've been doing, which is actually pretty good news. And on that note, our agenda for tonight is going to be to walk you through the CAFR, do a brief presentation, and share some of the highlights from the document that we are pretty, pretty proud of. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Kenneth, and he will take it from here to walk you through the CAFR.
Thank you. So the CAFR is a pretty big document. It's about 140 pages. So we prepared for you today a very high level view of what's in it. The first section is the Transmittal Letter, and the most important thing is that our CAFR is audited. It's the city's audited financial statements, and it was audited by Mason Associates. They've been our auditors for a few years now. They have, they help, they're really known in the field. They help a lot, they audit a lot of different municipalities. They gave us a clean audit opinion, also known as an unmodified opinion. What that means is that they agree with how we did our accounting books and agree with the presentation of the financial statements. They also suggested that we update the investment policy to coincide with state regulations and requirements. Previously, it was, we had to submit within 45 days. State requirements is 30 days, so that's the only change that you see with that update. Later in the Transmittal Letter, there is a few paragraphs about the economy, and the local unemployment rate is lower than the state's, and that's a good sign, but it's important to keep in mind that the economic future still is uncertain. A lot of our revenues come from transient occupancy tax, which I'm sure you know that is generated mostly from tourism. The silver lining with that is that the contingency reserve is funded at 5.1 million. Recently, council approved a second reserve called the Economic Concerned Reserve that's not reflected in this CAFR, but will be in the CAFR for next year. The next section is the Management Discussion and Analysis, also known as the MDA, and it's a, an analysis of all of our funds and financial data. I have the highlights here for you today. At the very top, the revenues, they decreased by about 1%, primarily from capital grants and contributions. These tend to be one-time monies, so it's not unusual for them to ebb and flow between years. Expenses also decreased by about 1%. Our cash and investment position is at 61.6 million and increased by about 2.7 from the previous year. So our general fund balance totals totaled at the end of June 10.9 million, which is an increase. So when city staff estimated and was budgeting last year for the 1920 budget, staff estimated that the ending fund balance would be 10 million. Turns out that it is 10.9 million, so we have, we came out about 900,000 more than what we initially anticipated. General fund revenues increased by about 3%, while expenditures remain relatively flat with only a .3 increase. And the last point doesn't have much of a financial impact in this CAFR, but it's important to highlight that the judgment obligation bond has been fully paid of August 2019, and that was in relation with the insurance settlement. So the next section is the Financial Statements. The statements are broken out into two categories, government-wide and fund financial statements. It's important to note that in the government-wide statements, the accounting method is different, so you can't fully compare the two statements against each other. The government-wide statements are similar to what you see in private industry. They're broken out into two different types of activities, government activities, this is everything except our enterprise funds, business-type activities are enterprise funds, also known like our sewer funds. So this is the statement of activities. You may also know it as an income statement. This tracks between, the changes between the past two years. If you look all the way to the right with the variances, you can see that our program revenues decreased by about 15%. That's due to the capital grants that I mentioned previously. Property taxes increased by about 7%. Sales tax decreased by 1%. And TOT tax increased by about 6%. And with our expenses, they've decreased ever so slightly by .1, 1.3%. So as we get a little bit more detailed, we talk about the fund financial statements. So the funds are the accountant's way of segregating monies based on objectives, activities, or restriction levels. We have 12 governmental funds that, so pretty much everything except for our sewer funds. There's two types of funds, the governmental, which is everything but sewer, and the proprietary funds, which are sewer and our internal service funds. As another reminder, our governmental funds, the accounting method is different, so you can't compare them with the statement I showed you previously. This is our governmental funds. As you can see, our total revenues have increased by about 17%. The biggest increase is that 154%. That is a developer impact fee that was in relation to the Highway 1 project. We have a big decrease in capital outlay spending, negative 74%. That's because in the year prior, we spent more building the beautiful library. And then finally, this is the general fund. This is the management's most important fund. This represents unrestricted monies that City Council can use at their discretion. Revenues have decreased by about 3%, and it's important to note that our government functions, our departments, our safety, our public works, our administration costs have stayed flat at about .3%. And as you can see at the very bottom, our net change is about 993,000. The only recommendation in motion that staff asked for you, council, tonight is adopt a resolution receiving the City of Half Moon Bay Comprehensive Annual Financial Statement Report, CAFR, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019, and adopt a resolution amending the investment policy.
All right, excellent report. Are there any clarifying questions or comments from council? Looks like the city's in great shape. Thank you so much. Great first presentation. We really appreciate it. Welcome aboard. Great to have you here. Do we have any, do we have a motion?
I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution receiving the City of Half Moon Bay Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019, and adopt a resolution amending the investment policy.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Well done. All right. Next is item 3B, the Loan of Affordable Housing Funds for Proposed Abundant Grace Workforce Development Center at 515 Kelly Avenue.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. The next three items are mine, so get comfortable. I'm long-winded. It's going to be a long night. Now, we'll try to make the next couple items brief. I'm pleased to be before you again. We obviously brought this to you two weeks ago at your council meeting, and I will do a brief presentation to catch those councilmembers that were not in attendance up and share with you some of the things we've done since that point. So by way of background, the city has an affordable housing fund, and actually at your last meeting, the council approved Affordable Housing Fund Allocation Guidelines that include having an understanding of the Affordable Housing Fund status, its ability to fund affordable housing projects, making sure that any proposed projects and funding are consistent with the guiding principles of the Affordable Housing Fund, confirming that they're... Fund, confirming that their proposed use is an eligible use, and confidence that the funded use will actually be realized. So the proposal before you today is a workforce development center to be acquired and developed by Abundant Grace. As you know, Abundant Grace Coastside Worker is a local nonprofit that works on programs to serve homeless population here in Half Moon Bay as, as well as others in need. They currently offer employment programs, life skills development, and other programs to help support local folks. As you know, they have the Farm Labor Program, where they take individuals up to a farm several days a week, and they plant and harvest crops, and then distribute those, the food to people in need, and it's a great program. And of course, they've partnered with the city for the Coastside Clean Team, which is a city-funded program that allows individuals to clean our beaches and some of our parks and streets, and it's been an incredibly successful program. All of these programs have yielded results where we see people go from these types of subsidized employment programs to unsubsidized employment, which is the goal of all these programs, and many of these folks then have found housing in better situations for themselves. So we're really excited to continue to work with Abundant Grace on all the important work that they do. The development center is really an opportunity for them to, one, establish a, a home base, a location for them to offer their services, and also to expand the work that they do. With this new development center that they've proposed, they'll continue to offer employment programs, which I, I assume will grow over time, as well as additional life skills and development programs. They'll also offer storage for these folks' goods, showers, and laundry services, which will obviously help individuals with personal dignity and preparation for permanent employment. So the proposal is to acquire 515 Kelly Avenue, which is just a few buildings down here. It's the former senior coast siders thrift store, and the family that owns it has put it up for sale, and Abundant Grace is currently in escrow for the acquisition of this property. The purchase price is $925,000. They also estimate in order to develop this center, they'll need about $200,000 for renovations and FFNE, which is furniture, fixtures, and equipment, it's all the stuff that goes inside the building. So they are trying to raise 1.125 million dollars. The county has already approved a loan of $300,000 to help with the acquisition, and they've requested a matching loan from the city of $300,000. The remaining $525,000, they are doing private fundraising for, and anything that remains in, in need for this project, they will take out a private loan, a mortgage for the property. Going back to our October 15th meeting, where the council first discussed this proposal, there was some direction from council for, one, for Abundant Grace to do some community, to do a community engagement, and make sure that the community was aware of the project and had a chance to provide feedback and input to make sure it's developed in a way that's compatible with the community. They did outreach to the city council, the Cabrillo Unified School District at their school board meeting, and met with parents as members of the CUNYA Parent Teacher Association. The other direction from council was for them to go and get entitlements for the property. And at the November 12th Planning Commission, those entitlements were approved, they received a conditional use permit, and planning permits for the development that they want to do, the work they want to do. The appeal period for that approval closed on November 26, and there were no appeals. Just some brief overview of the loan itself, which, draft of which was attached to your packet, and hopefully you've had a chance to see it. It's based on similar terms, it's the loan that the county has granted to them, it's a 15-year term, it bears no interest, and repayment is deferred to the end of the 15 years. If there was a property sale or services ceased at this location, or some other violation of the agreement, repayment would be made early. It would become due unpayable upon that default to that change of status. Some of the special conditions in the loan include asking for additional services and educational programs. I think of note, we talked about good neighbor training, especially for individuals who may be living in RVs or on the street right now, making sure that they're not having a negative impact on the, the environment or their neighborhood while they're dealing with these difficult times. Additionally, should the city move forward to the Safe Parking Program in the future, Abundant Grace will help us with the development of that program. And a safety and security plan was required as part of this agreement. Some of the prohibited activities include overnight sleeping and parking at the site, and this has to be completely run as a nonprofit location, no for-profit activities. And in, in cooperation with the sheriff's office, we've asked that they assist any of their clients and workers with resolving outstanding warrants and other legal issues so that we don't have to have law enforcement involved at the site. At your last meeting, we heard concerns about the safety and security of the, the neighborhood and this type of use, and so we just wanted to bring forward some updates on work that we've done with Abundant Grace, and I think what has resulted in really meeting the needs of the community and making sure that this is run safely and effectively. The first thing, of course, is the safety and security plan, and I direct you to the slides. This image shows an architectural drawing of the improvements they plan to make, and I just wanted to point out some of the safety and security features in this drawing. The left side of the image is Kelly Avenue, and this property runs north and south. So along the south side of the property, on the left side of the screen, you'll see there's a, a low fence with gates. This is more of a picket fence-type structure, it's not meant to keep people out, but it's just a visual reminder that they're, you're going into the property, and they have some gardens and ADA parking there and the main access to the building. It's, it's a little hard to decipher on this, but about a third of the way, moving from left to right, at both the top and bottom, you'll see that there are some thin lines, those indicate higher gates, and these are gates that will be locked during non-business hours, and the intent is that during non-business hours, people aren't to be on the site, they're not to gather here or loiter here, it's, it's really meant to be an active site when it's open and, and quiet when it's closed. Additionally, high fencing will surround the entire property, and on the corners of the building, you'll see security cameras that will be installed and, and have eyes on the entire site, as well as you'll see outlined in red, lots of security lighting, so it'll be clear if individuals are on the property. As, as you know, to the west of this property is the Morpher Last Gas Station, and to the south is the AT&amp;T Service Center, it's a, you know, non-staffed building, and behind it is a parking lot that's connected to the Coastside Clinic in this property, so not a lot of immediate neighbors. As we know, across the street and down Kelly Avenue is CUNYA Middle School and the Boys and Girls Club gym, and as we talk through some of the other things that they'll be doing, the, the focus is really to prevent individuals traveling to the school from having to be worried about the interaction that might take place at this facility, and I think the plan meets that desire. One of the things that is in the loan agreement is, at any time, the city can demand a report of the activities that Abundant Grace has been participating in at the facility, and that will allow us to see if there's anything going on there that we think is incompatible with the neighborhood. Other things we've done to help ensure that Abundant Grace is really diligent in working with their, their clients and their employees to, to be good neighbors is, we've increased the insurance requirements in the, in the loan agreement from our traditional insurance requirements for other types of agreements. We will also be recording a deed of trust against the property, and that will give us the ability to take action if there was a, a series of defaults that led us to eventually terminate the loan agreement. I think most importantly, the conditions of land use approval are really well-designed to make sure that this is a compatible use in the neighborhood. Again, that's, this is where the no overnight sleeping and parking first came out, no for-profit activities. The food that will be served there needs to be more of a business-type, you know, if you're having a meeting and you're serving refreshments, th, this would not be used as a soup kitchen or a mass food distribution site. There would be no group gatherings that would disturb the neighbors, and that's a condition of their approval. And I think most importantly is, at the end of one year, the Community Development Director will review all the activities and complaints and interactions that we've seen over the first year of operation, and she can actually modify those conditions or impose new restrictions going forward. So it really gives us a chance in a year to just look at the operations that have taken place there, look at the community, and make sure that this is really successful in, in meeting the needs of these individuals in our community, but also compatibility with that neighborhood. So we believe with all of this that we've, we've really found a lot of different ways to, to make sure that this operates in a safe and secure way, and that it's really meeting our community's needs. So in order to actually allocate these affordable housing funds that have been requested, we do have to make findings in accordance with the Funding Allocation Guidelines. So the first is understand the Affordable Housing Fund status. At the beginning of this fiscal year, we budgeted for 2.47 million dollars in affordable housing funds. Their request is for $300,000 of these funds, which would leave 2.17 million by the end of this year, and we believe that that's sufficient to fund other projects and, and meet the needs of our Affordable Housing Fund. We have to look at consistency with our guiding principles. This project leverages other funding by not only getting a matching grant from the county, but also seeking private donations and, and, you know, Abundant Grace getting funds on its own. It supports an at-risk population that has been proven to be very successful locally, and so we believe it's consistent with the guiding principles. Confirmation of eligible use, this is a program that is meant for homelessness prevention, and that is an eligible use under the guidelines. And finally, we have to find that we are confident that the funded use will be realized. Abundant Grace has successfully provided programs without a facility like this, and been a great partner to the city, so we really believe that by expanding their ability to offer services, that we can be confident that the funded use will be realized, and I, I would venture to say that our expectations will be over-realized, and we'll see great things come out of here. So based on all this, we recommend that the council adopt a resolution authorizing a loan of affordable housing funds not to exceed $300,000 to Abundant Grace Coastside Worker to contribute toward the purchase of property to be used for a workforce development center, and authorizing the city manager to execute the loan agreement. And with that, we'll take any clarifying questions or public comment.
I would like to move. Are we, yeah? Any questions? Oh. Oh, sorry.
So I wasn't here for the meeting, unfortunately, but I did watch the meeting online and read the staff report, so I'm, I think I'm up to speed on the item, and I think, I'd like to congratulate staff for working diligently on a, a plan and agreements that I think effectively, you know, protect the city and the community while allowing a great new service to hopefully flourish, establish and flourish. So I support this project 100%. I agree with the deputy city manager that I think that, that it will have good outcomes for the community and, and, you know, help grow the chance for, for related projects that have, you know, other benefits, so I think it's a, it's a great idea.
I'd like to make a comment on it too, yeah, real quick. So, yeah, when this first came out, it was, there was a lot of rush to, to get this done, and I didn't feel like we had done the correct outreach that needed to be done either. And since that has happened, I just really want to say that the outreach that Eric and his team has done has been fantastic, and we've hit, or I should say we, but you, hit the, you know, when you mentioned these things, the school, the, the middle school, CUNYA, the PTO, the Boys and Girls Club, and, and also a couple of different, you know, parents and people that were needed to be talked to, so I thought that was great because, you know, again, back to your point earlier, you know, we, we've had meetings about these topics, we're getting it out into the public. Before we approve anything, we are extremely transparent about what we're doing, so I thought that was a very necessary step, and I just really want to thank you for doing the work on that. And then the second piece is the staff, where I feel like we came a long way with the agreement to make sure that it had all the different specificis, specificities that were needed to kind of protect ourselves, protect Eric, protect the city, all different aspects. So I just, I feel like it started off quick, and then through the process, we got to exactly where we need to be, and I'm super excited for the future of this program and what it's gonna do for the community, and that's about all I got to say. So thank you all for your efforts in making it happen.
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing a loan of affordable housing funds not to exceed $300,000 to Abundant Grace Coastside Worker to contribute toward the purchase of her property to be used for a workforce development center, and authorizing the city manager to execute the loan.
Yeah, that's one, I, I don't know the difference between the roll call, you have to educate me after this meeting, but is this a roll call vote? Generally speaking, yeah? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Penrose?
Aye.
Councilmember Wareback?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, congratulations, well done. Yeah, well done. I think everybody's very excited about the future of what this program's gonna bring, and thank you, Eric, for all your work in making it happen, your contributions to the community as well, so thank you. Next item is the Half Moon, is item 3C, the Half Moon Bay History Association Lease Agreement for 503 Johnston Street.
Thank you, council, for this item. I'll be joined by Karen Decker, our Senior Management Analyst in the city manager's office, and she's been the lead on working with the History Association on this item, and she'll be doing the presentation.
Thank you, Matthew. Good evening, Mayor Eisen, and council, and members of the community, it's a pleasure to be with you, and it's a pleasure to present the Half Moon Bay History Association Lease Agreement for Use of 503 Johnston Street, commonly referred to as the jail barn, or more historically accurate, the jail garage. So just some quick context, some quick context. In August 2017, council directed staff to explore potential uses for the site, and that included the possibility for major renovations. It was important to council that staff look into providing access and education in a way that was consistent with the historic character of the property and the structures on it. So charged with that, city entered into a short-term agreement with the Half Moon Bay History Association in March of 2018, and that really provided the green light for the association to open the jail to the public and start operating a micro-museum. That fall in September, staff commissioned a historic resource evaluation, and the purpose of that report was to see if the current structures qualified as historic buildings according to the National Register of Historic Places. And the jail did meet two out of the four criteria. The garage was acknowledged as an ancillary building to the jail, but it did not meet any of the criteria. Also, staff commissioned a structural assessment, and we expect to have a full report at the beginning of the new year. So since the commitments of that short-term agreement, a lot of activity has happened. It allowed enough time for the association to develop displays and exhibits, of course, open the jail as a micro-museum. They operate an educational program where they serve coastside students at all the coastside schools, including Kings Mountain, and I understand they've made contact with over 200 third graders. They've also built a volunteer program, and as of today, they have over 25 trained docents. They also offer walking tours of downtown in addition to what they do on the property, and they've also made upgrades to the property. I know that they have I know that they have stopped some deterioration from the current buildings, including as it pertains to rodents and whatnot. And if you've had an opportunity to walk by, there's some beautiful landscaping, and that's all at the hands of the association. So another purpose of the agreement was to look at the feasibility of the long-term use. And that, of course, entails converting that current garage into a full-scale museum. And in order to do that, the association had to go through planning and regulatory requirements, including review by the Planning Commission, which reviewed and approved the coastal development permit, which is in good standing. They have nearly complete drawings that are expected to be submitted by the end of this calendar year. So we're talking within the next two weeks. And of course, the submit all of those drawings triggers the building permit application. So in order to make this dream a reality, a major component of this is to raise the necessary funds. So in November 2018, a major campaign was launched. And I understand that the goal was to cover construction costs, yes, which would be essential, but also to cover museum exhibits and ultimately an endowment. And to date, at the time, the goal was $1.6 million. And to date, the association has secured $1.28 million in donations and pledges. So given that the association has met its requirement to operate the micro-museum, and they have met all the other terms of their current agreement, they are on track with the planning and building requirements. They have raised double the amount of money that was estimated to cover the construction costs. Staff respectfully recommends that council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with the Half Moon Bay History Association for use of the premises at 503 Johnston Street as a local history museum, including modifications to the garage building, previously referred to as the Johnston Barn, for a term of 25 years with no annual fee. So I would just like to take this opportunity to go over some of the lease highlights, to highlight some of the terms of the lease. So use would be for a local history museum. This would provide education and cultural exhibits for public viewing. In light of the significant investments in renovations and the general public benefit, the use would be at no cost to the association. They would be authorized to make improvements by converting the garage into a full-scale museum and proceed with construction. And the operational requirements would include having the museum open on Saturdays and Sundays for six hours a day, excluding major holidays and the occasional fundraising event. They would be expected to offer special group tours, and of course, continue the educational program that they have started. And this should all be free to the public with the exception of some special events or fundraising events. In terms of maintenance, the association would be responsible for maintenance, repair, and operations of the property, and any improvements, existing or new, at its sole cost and expense. Similarly, utilities and taxes and other costs of operation would be the responsibility of the association. So a 25-year lease, 25 years is not insignificant, and staff wanted to do our due diligence in regards to that. So we consulted with legal counsel, and the maximum for a lease is 55 years, so 25 years is well within the legal limit. And we found that the length of time was comparable to other properties, especially given the extent of capital improvements and investment done by the association. Even with the best intentions in mind, staff and the association did meet, and we were upfront and candid about any fears or anything that could occur in the future. And so there is termination language drafted with that in mind. So construction should begin within one year. And if that doesn't happen, city reserves the right to terminate the lease. And in the spirit of reciprocity, let's say in the event of an economic downturn, if this council or a future council decided that they wanted to sell the property in a surplus sale, then the association would have the opportunity to terminate the lease. Let's say in the event that the association dissolved as a nonprofit and ceased to exist, city would reserve the right to terminate the lease prior to that happening. And then, of course, there's the standard default and termination language. So if the association defaults on any terms of the agreement or fails to cure any defaults, the city would reserve the right to terminate.
May I ask some questions right there, real quick? Because most of my questions on this topic revolve around that, so I might as well hit it while you're on it. But can you explain, so I understood what you just said, sort of. The economic downturn in particular piece, so my fear of 25 years is eight years from now, the Ritz-Carlton falls into the ocean, we don't have the funding, you know, 15 years. Okay, let's say 15 years. Yeah, yeah. So and then we need, all of a sudden, the city's in a financial situation where we need funds in order to kind of move on. How does that work, again, from this standpoint?
Right. So should the city decide to use the property in a surplus sale, the association would not be subject to getting caught in like a triple net situation in the sense that they reserve the right to terminate the lease and not be subject to a new lesser. So it gives the association room to back out of the agreement, but of course, city reserves the right to sell the property at any time should we have the circumstances that necessitate that.
I think it's also important to note that the way the agreement's written, as soon as the improvements are completed, they are owned by the city. And so the History Association is taking on some risk by developing these improvements and having them be under the ownership of the city. And so any sale that we made in the future, we would benefit from those improvements being completed.
I'm sorry, I think we have a couple more questions, real quick.
That's okay.
This is not a question, it's a comment. I just want to give a shout out to the History Association. The work that Dave Cresson and all the people in the association have put into this over the last several years is remarkable, and it's reflected in their ability to raise $1.2 million. That's really pretty phenomenal. So congratulations, and I'm very excited that we're going to be able to work with these very competent people and show everybody else what a great history this town has.
I follow this saga for a decade now, and it's absolutely wonderful that the city will finally have what many other cities of smaller or even very small size have, which is a significant history museum that will be open to the public for free. And I really, really support this effort.
And I think it's going to be great as a city. People in the city and visitors realize, you know, it's not just the jail. If you have a chance to look inside this barn and what's being created, and, sorry?
Garage.
Garage, yeah, right. Don't confuse it with the barn restaurant. The garage, right. I keep thinking of it as a barn, though. Anyway, it's an amazing space, and I think it's going to be a major destination, a cool event place. And I'm really proud of the city for, and the community, really, for being able to raise this money and realize that they appreciate the value of a historical society. So it's great.
And I'm sorry to start having council speak, but did you want to finish, or is there anything else before we?
Sure.
I'm so sorry about that. I just had to get my question out there.
Not at all. So with that said, staff took the information that you just heard to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they had a chance to review and ultimately recommended approval as well in addition to staff. And then I just wanted to make a note about the partnership between city and the association. So as the person on staff that's been working closely with Matthew and the association over the last year, it's really been a pleasure. And I have to say, the association has been a really great partner. Matthew and I were approached by a board member, and they were looking at some state funding, and they were submitting an application and asked us for a letter of support. We were more than happy to oblige. Along those same veins, you know, about half of staff are local, meaning that they're half or not. And so when we were talking about to the association, they offered to do a specific walking tour for staff, to the point where we've kind of incorporated that into our new staff orientation. And it's open to existing staff, too, because you learn a lot of new things on that tour, whether you're local or not. I had the privilege of participating in one myself. And I have to say that being based out of City Hall and walking by these buildings all the time, until you get more of a sense of the people who came before you and the structures and everything that culminated into where we are today, it really enriched my own understanding of current day projects. So in that spirit of partnership, I'd like to take this opportunity to invite the association president, Juliette Applewhite, and their treasurer, Scott Frazier, for a quick introduction. And then we welcome any additional comments or questions.
Hello. Thank you so much for your positive remarks so far. And I will be really brief because it's really late. So unfortunately, or fortunately, we had a speaker series event tonight, and Mark Hilkema came to have a wonderful dialogue, so most of our members are otherwise occupied tonight. I joined the History Association with their education team, going to the schools, the third grade classes, where we sort of take them through a time warp, if you will, and it's a wonderful experience for them. And then they do various crafts, going from grinding things with mortars and pestles to making quilts. It's phenomenal. Fast forward, I'm now on the board. I'm now their board chair, and I've seen and experienced the amazing program that we have for training our docents. And we did that very quickly, thanks to various, quite a crew, quite frankly. Our fundraising effort has been pretty phenomenal, and we're hopefully closing in on that by the end of the year. Ed Love has been very gracious to design a new structure that is going to be phenomenal. The space will be amazing. And just in the first six months of the jail museum being open, we had people from over 81 countries. And I think that's kind of an important thing to think about. It's pretty impressive. So we are exposed to, we have the opportunity to share our history with quite a variety of people, and that's really powerful. Do you have any questions? Is there anything that I can help you with in this process? So here's the deal. Historically, it actually was a structure that would hold vehicles of the time, and the two terms were actually used sort of equally. So you can call it whatever you want to call it. Well, of those two. Yeah, Robert, you're okay.
I just want to say with a bias that Juliette's a neighbor of mine, and everything she gets involved with in the community is always greatly enhanced. So thank you, Juliette.
I don't think we have any further questions. Thank you for all the work on this.
I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with the Half Moon Bay History Association for the use of the premises at 503 Johnston Street as a local history museum, including modifications to the garage building previously referred to as the Johnston Barn, for a term of 25 years with no annual fee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, anybody against? No? All right, item passes. Thank you so much. All right, we're moving on to item 3D Minimum Wage Ordinance Study Session.
All right, last one you'll hear from me tonight. On this item, I'll be joined by Victor Gaetan, our management analyst in our Community Services Division, and Jonathan Royssman, our deputy city clerk, who have been working on this project together. And I will give a brief introduction, a little bit of background, and then turn it over to them for other portions of the presentation. So as you may recall, back in March during your priority setting session for this fiscal year, exploring a local minimum wage of $15 was set as one of your five top priorities for this year. And I just want to give a little bit of background. In our country, minimum wage is set by the federal government, but also the state government. And local governments also have the opportunity to impose their own local minimum wages. And the rule is whichever one is the highest is the one that you have to follow the requirements for. So the federal minimum wage, going back to 2009, is $7.25. And of course, in an economy like this and where we live, that is such an absurd number. So the state of California recognizes this, and in 2016, Senate Bill 3 passed, which will raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour by January 1st, 2022, for large employers, and by January 1st, 2023, for small employers. And then, beginning on January 1st, 2024, CPI increases will apply to all employers going above the $15 minimum wage. And over the last several years, there's been annual increases to get us to the $15 amount. As I mentioned, local governments can impose their own minimum wage, and 49 cities in California have already done so, or nationwide have already done so. But I believe 19 of those cities are in the Bay Area. You know, we have a very high cost of living, and so many cities in the Bay Area have done so. In San Mateo County, six cities have already passed minimum wage ordinances, taking them over $15 an hour. I'll direct you to the chart above, which shows where we're at with the state of California and how that progression happens up to the $15, as well as where other cities are at. San Mateo is, you know, ahead of the curve and actually went to $15 at the beginning of this calendar year. And in 2020, they will impose a CPI that gets them to about $15.38. And then they'll continue to add CPIs to that. Other cities in the county have also done so with South San Francisco and Menlo Park going to $15 minimum wage starting this January. And Daly City is making incremental steps, and we'll get there in 2021. Burlingame and San Carlos are also considering minimum wages right now. We're a little bit ahead of them in our process, but they'll probably follow very soon. So the work that we've been doing has been researching how minimum wage can be applied, what the impacts could be, both at the state, federal, national level, and what the research shows us about minimum wage in our country, and the impacts of increasing the minimum wage, as well as a ton of outreach to our local community to understand our local concerns and our local considerations. And so I'd like to turn the time over to Jonathan Royssman, who did a lot of research on the academic side regarding minimum wage studies across our country and here in the Bay Area, and he'll share some of the findings that we have from that. And then Victor will carry us through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Matthew. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable city council members. So the city researched six contemporary minimum wage increase studies, and the six studies include two from UC Berkeley and one each from UCLA, the London School of Economics, the Congressional Budget Office, and the University of Washington. Most of the studies analyzed minimum wage data in the United States from 2005 to 2017. Some of it was broad, some of it was pretty narrow. One of the UC Berkeley studies focused on six major American cities from 2012 to 2016, and three of those cities were in the Bay Area. They were San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose. The broader study was from the London School of Economics, where it studied 138 different minimum wage increases across the United States from 1979 to 2016. The takeaways varied, but were fairly consistent. The University of Washington showed concerns if the minimum wage increased above $13 an hour, workers on average lost about 45 minutes a week in their shifts, but overall made a net gain increase in wages because of the increased minimum wage. The Congressional Budget Office said as many as 1.3 million Americans would lose their job if a federal minimum wage was set at $15 an hour, but that 17 million more Americans would also see immediate wage increases. None of the studies showed statistically significant findings of businesses closing solely because of minimum wage increases, however. of businesses closing solely because of minimum wage increases, however. A UC Berkeley study showed positive wage impacts for employees without statistically significant job losses when the minimum wage was increased. And there was evidence that it lifted people out of poverty as defined by the federal government. Overall, impact for employees was neutral to positive. Businesses tended to increase prices for goods and services to keep up with the minimum wage increases. And really, another main takeaway was the UC Berkeley study stated that policy was outpacing research in the United States. And a UCLA study summed it up best when it said, "Some 60 years and hundreds of research papers from prestigious universities, government agencies, and private organizations have created little consensus on the subject, academic or otherwise." So we found that most study, you could find a study for whichever position you favored.
Thank you, Jonathan. And now I'll walk us through our outreach methods. So over the last two months, city staff has conducted outreach to businesses and key business stakeholders about the proposed minimum wage increase in the city of Half Moon Bay. Outreach methods have included direct outreach, one-on-one meetings with businesses, roundtable business meetings with multiple businesses at a time, business stakeholder meetings with key business stakeholders, like the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce. And a postcard that was mailed to every single registered business in the city, which is approximately 550 businesses, inviting them to attend a business stakeholder meeting. In addition, the city has established a dedicated webpage for the Minimum, Minimum Wage Initiative. As I mentioned on the previous slide, city staff met or spoke with several key business stakeholder groups, including the ones listed there. Coastside Chamber of Commerce, the Half Moon Bay Hotel Business Improvement District, Downtown Business Association, San Mateo County Central Labor Council, San Mateo County Convention Visitors Bureau, California Restaurant Association, and the San Mateo County Farm Bureau. In talks with these organizations, some of the stakeholder groups have worked with other cities on local minimum wage policies. And while they recognize the need for these policies, they also mentioned that there are some associated challenges for the business community. And again, one of these stakeholder groups was the San Mateo County Central Labor Council. Their representatives expressed overwhelming support for a $15 per hour minimum wage, and expressed that they have supported every single minimum wage increase in San Mateo County. Now, based on the research collected, staff conducted outreach on the premise of establishing a local minimum wage of $15 per hour beginning on July 1, 2020. Outreach to local businesses in the city of Half Moon Bay included a mix of small group business meetings, mainly with the Downtown Business Association and the Half Moon Bay Hotel Business Improvement District, as well as some one-on-one interactions. Several of the retail and professional businesses share that they are already paying employees at least $15 or more and don't feel that the local minimum wage ordinance would adversely affect them. On the flip side, restaurants and hotels express the greatest concern about having a significant increase in local minimum wage. And these concerned businesses share that going straight to $15 on July 1, 2020 is a big jump. It would be $2 over the state minimum for large businesses, $3 for small businesses. And it would be difficult to bear that increase in the middle of the calendar year. Also in mentioning that several other cities in San Mateo County have already enacted their own local minimum wage ordinances, businesses repeatedly mention that due to the nature of Half Moon Bay being a tourist economy, businesses run on thinner margins and don't see the foot traffic that larger cities see. Due to this, they express that it is difficult to compare Half Moon Bay with other cities in the county, and that businesses in Half Moon Bay would be more adversely affected by minimum wage increases compared to other cities. These are some of the main business concerns that we heard from businesses. That significant increases in the minimum wage would cause reduced employee hours, staffing cuts, or even closures of businesses. Businesses mentioned there's a significant payroll administration in increasing wages, which is why it would be difficult to implement in the middle of the year. They also mentioned that wage increases leads to increases in operating costs, increases in paying more for social security, Medicare, workers' compensation, and other associated taxes. And lastly, another, another of their big concerns was the issue of wage compaction. As wages for the lowest-paid workers increase, inevitably wages for all other workers increase, increasing operating across, across the board. Now, some of the feedback we received from restaurants and hotels asked about the possibility of carving out an exception for tipped employees. Following up on this, staff checked into it. And several other cities have already looked into this as well. The answer is that we cannot make an exception for tipped employees, consistent with an opinion from the California Office of Legislative Council. Cities cannot allow for a different minimum wage, whatever the highest minimum wage is in a city, whether it be a city minimum wage or a state minimum wage. That is the minimum wage across the board for every single employee, whether they're tipped or not. But there are some exceptions that we should keep in mind when drafting ordinance. One of those exceptions is for federal, state, and county agencies. Any minimum wage that the city does impose does not apply to those agencies. Each of those agencies has their own jurisdiction, is not subject to city oversight when it relates to their government function. Although, these agencies can subject themselves to the city ordinance voluntarily. So based on that direction that we've received from city council at the priority setting session and input from business stakeholders, staff has prepared the following alternatives for city council consideration input and for their direction. And here we have alternative A, which would be that city council would take no action at the local level, with Half Moon Bay employers adhering to the state's phased-in minimum wage schedule, which will reach $15 in 2022. Alternative B would be to adopt a local minimum wage ordinance that increases the minimum wage in Half Moon Bay to $15 per hour for all employers, starting July 1, 2020, with annual CPI increases beginning on January 1, 2021. Alternative C would be to adopt a local minimum wage ordinance that increases the minimum wage in Half Moon Bay to $15 per hour for all employers, beginning on January 1, 2021. CPI increases beginning on January 1, 2022. And alternative D, which is a combination of both B and C, would see the minimum wage increase to $14 per hour for all employers, starting on July 1, 2020, followed by an increase to $15 per hour for all employers on January 1, 2021, and CPA increases starting on January 1, 2022. And options that other cities have explored and implemented include having separate wage tiers for nonprofits versus all other employers. That's what the city of San Mateo did. Or different wage tiers for employers with 26 or more employees versus employers with 25 employees or less. And that's what the state did. So based on all of that, staff seeks a recommendation from council on how to proceed with one of the proposed alternatives or with any other feedback or ideas that the council may have. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or go back to any slides you'd like to see. Thank you.
Yeah, but just before we go to public comment, are there any clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Or should we just go to public comment? Questions to clarify first?
Well, I just want to make it clear for all of us. We're not, we're not limited to those four alternatives. We can mix and match as well. So just that we're all clear on that.
All right, with no further questions. Thank you for that presentation. Let's go to public comment first. Let's start off with Belinda Ariaga.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here today to be able to speak. And first of all, congratulations, Mayor, on your new role. And to past Mayor Harvey, we really appreciate you and all that you've done for our community. And we look forward to working with all of you. And congratulations, Vice Mayor. As far as the minimum wage, it's been really shocking. Over the last year, we've been working with a lot of families related to the layoffs and at Bay City, and just the economic hardships that so many have faced. So we've been hearing a lot of stories about individuals making $12 an hour. When you really stop and think, you know, what $12 an hour means to a person in this economy, it's below poverty. I mean, they can't make it. And I was looking at the slides, and it was saying, well, you know, the employers were saying, well, we need to think about how this is going to affect us. We can't just step it up like that, just kind of summarizing. And my first thought was, well, no one asked the families or us, like, you know, you're going to get this huge cost of increase. Your rent's going to go up astronomically. Like, nobody asked them to think and stop and think about that, you know, and have some time to save. So I think we really need to think that it's more of an urgency. It's not really even a choice. As I have said before, everyone was so worried about deportation, ICE raids. And while we're still worried about that, one of the biggest things is people are being deported from our community because of the economy. They're leaving in droves. Families are not making it. They're really struggling. One room right now for families living in one room, not an apartment, one room, is between $1,000 and $1,500 a month for one room. So can $12 an hour, you know, can they make it on that? One income earner, now we have, you know, over 300 people that lost their jobs that are trying to transition into this. I have one mom that I follow regularly, and she's like, you know, she's going to work at 3:00 in the morning, getting up to work every day happily. And luckily, she got a little bit of a raise, but she started at the low end. And it just, they can't make it at 12. So I appreciate you all thinking about this. And I certainly hope that you will pass it. And the sooner the better. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Next is Margarita Vazquez.
Good evening, council. My name is Margarita Vazquez. I'm a resident here at Half Moon Bay. And I'm 22 years old. And I think, just a little backstory. Growing up, I came from a parent that immigrated here. So they definitely, for instance, my father, he had to work two jobs in order to have us living in a good situation. So not getting to see him a lot was kind of hard. However, like, as time progressed, it was, it got a little easier. He quit one of his jobs. But I know a lot of families right now that are going through that. They have to maintain two jobs in order to make ends meet. So I think leaving, living in a very high, high state is very, it's very real. Just like Belinda said, a lot of these people have to live in multiple, like, multiple families have to live in one house just to be able to make ends meet. So I think it's, it's really real. And I get it, you know. I kind of, I, I was able to, I took economics, so I, I understand supply and demand. But I think it is definitely something that I think you should all look forward to, because it is getting really hard. And I think just from personal experience, it is, it is a struggle. So I hope you all take this into consideration, and thank you.
All right. Thank you, Margarita. Next is Kristalyn.
Kristalyn, CEO of the HMB Coastside Chamber of Commerce. So I'm here representing multiple members who wanted to be here tonight but had to work. So the first one is from Josh, the owner of Romescos in Shoreline Station. They recently purchased that restaurant. And his comment was that although they support the minimum wage increase overall, the timing would be the biggest hardship for them after the PG&E shut-offs devastated their business. So if there could be the extended timeline, that would help them prepare for, to be able to handle the wage increase. And then I sent out some results to a survey that we did back in April, when this first started bubbling up, because I wanted to get a feeling from our businesses. And you'll notice from the survey results that the majority of businesses that replied were, were in favor of the minimum wage increase. But I will point out that the majority of those that replied were not restaurants. And those that have been most vocal are the restaurants because of their tipped employees. And although they understand that there can't be a carve-out for them, they're concerned about the morale of their employees if the minimum wage goes up, but then the tipped employees are then making that much more because they bring home so much in tipped. But overall, the businesses were very much pro-minimum wage, but just rolling it out very slowly. If you, if it needs to be done faster than the state, most agreed that the state rollout was timing that they had been preparing for, for a very long time, that they felt like they could sustain, and weren't entirely sure that increasing it by one year or one year and a half, although would have a negative impact on their business, was still coming down the line. So does it necessarily have to happen right now? Thank you.
Thank you for doing all that research for us. Very helpful information. The next person is Joaquin Jimenez. Thank you.
Good evening. How much, how much time do I have? Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. First of all, congratulations, new mayor, vice mayor. Congratulations. And Harvey, thank you for all the work you did. Thank you for the momentum that you gave us. And we want to make sure that we continue the momentum and make use of it. Thank you. San Mateo County, if you don't make $117,000 a year, you are below poverty level. $15 an hour in Half Moon Bay, we give a salary below $50,000. For a couple, a parent, both parents, be less than $100,000. We're still below the level. So I know, right now, what Half Moon Bay is creating, it's a, it's a model city, a model community. You know, and one thing you said earlier, it is. You're very transparent. You know, we see, I've said it, not just me, a few have said it, you know, these council members, like you, the council right now and the city staff, you're making Half Moon Bay a better place for the community. Increasing minimum wage to $15 is going to make a better place for our community. The ordinance that you, you passed a couple weeks ago is making a better place for our community. It is a struggle in our community. I've said it, we've said it, you know, losing our community members. It's not easy. You know, I know it's not easy for the business, you know, for some of the businesses in the area to pay, you know, minimum wage of $15 an hour. But everything's for us. It's, it's about our neighbors. It's about our family members, be able to afford the school district. The school, the school district is losing students. So it's, they're, it's been affected by the, by the low economy, you know, by, you know, by students leaving the county, the district. So hopefully, we're hoping $15 an hour will be, you know, dispersed among, you know, our community. We'll keep our students in the, in the district. More, the economy will be better for our businesses. Though, I don't know about you, but when I see more money in my pocket, I want to go spend it at the local restaurants, you know, the local stores. You know, so that's going to help the economy. So, you know, $15 an hour, I'm looking forward to it. And I'm sure a lot of our community members are looking forward to it. Right now, at a farm, you know, you're a farm worker, you're making like $11.50. I know several farm workers that have two jobs. They work the day job, $11.50 an hour, 5 o'clock. They go to the, to the next job. You know, 5 to 10, they work at the next job, to be able to make, you know, ends meet. to be able to make, you know, ends meet. Uh, so, you know, fifteen dollars an hour, be able to, we help, to help the parents, you know, to spend some time with their kids. They don't have to work two jobs, or maybe not every day, you know. But, you know, we're hoping, you know, creating a better community, yeah, it has to be all over, uh, rent control, you know, uh, rental security for, you know, community members, you know, a better, you know, paying wage. Uh, I think that for one person, you know, living wage, a single person is twenty dollars an hour to be able to be in San Mateo County. So fifteen is pretty close. You know, we can make it to twenty. Let's get twenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. Uh, last, we have Stephen Booker.
Good evening. Uh, congratulations, mayor, vice mayor, um, city council, hard-working staff. Thank you for allowing me this time. Um, you guys did a lot of my work for me. As some of you know, I'm a business representative for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers and I'm also the recorded secretary for the San Mateo County Central Labor Council. Um, so you having all our stats up there was, uh, really helpful. A lot of work that you guys did, so I appreciate that as well. Um, as you know, or may not know, the labor councils work closely with San Mateo, Belmont, Railwood City, Daly City, South San Francisco, Menlo Park on their ordinances as well. Um, so on behalf of the San Mateo County Central Labor Council, our one hundred and ten affiliates, our seventy-five thousand union members, we urge you to implement a citywide minimum wage ordinance raising the wage for all who work in or for Half Moon Bay to fifteen dollars an hour by July first, 2020, with an annual CPI increase beginning January 2021, which you guys had up there as a proposed alternative B. Um, as we heard earlier, Half Moon Bay is a destination for millions of local and, uh, global visitors every year. I believe Julia said they had eighty-one, uh, different countries visit the, the, uh, GL, which is, um, everyone's drawn by its coastal beauty and its irresistible charm. As Joaquin mentioned, the median income in Half Moon Bay is, is about a hundred and eleven thousand, which is higher than the county, which is about a hundred and six thousand. But what, what a lot of people don't realize is that thirteen percent of the children under five years old are living in poverty here in Half Moon Bay, which is, um, larger than the county average of eight percent. Fully twenty-five percent of Half Moon Bay households earn under fifty thousand dollars per year, which is low and, with a low unemployment rate. Most people are working, but not everyone is earning enough. Many full-time workers in Half Moon Bay are employed in lower-paying employment sectors, including retail, accommodation, and food services. Um, fifteen dollars an hour is about thirty-one thousand dollars a year, or twenty-six hundred a month before taxes. At this time, cities throughout San Mateo County have enacted minimum wage ordinance to recognize the high cost of living in an order for local business to remain competitive. Attracting and retail, attracting and retaining a skilled workforce is essential to the community's stability and economic vitality. Your city council has made enacting a minimum wage ordinance a strategic priority and staff has conducted considerable research. Uh, fifteen dollars an hour is really not enough, but like Joaquin said, it's a start. Um, one thing that I don't, that you guys didn't mention in your, in your study too, this, when, um, individuals get an increase in their wages, they tend to have, um, they tend to be more productive in their current job. And then therefore, um, the company or the employer gains a better worker and that employer also gets to spend, like Joaquin said, more time with their family because they don't have to work two or possibly three jobs. So, um, with that, I thank you for all your hard work and your consideration. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you guys tonight. And once again, I'm, uh, for proposed alternative B. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. That's, uh, July. All right. Excellent comments. Uh, let's, uh, let's bring it to council.
It's very difficult to talk about, um, feeling good about passing an ordinance, uh, to allow people to stay under the poverty level. Uh, we're going to give people fifteen dollars an hour and they're still going to be in poverty. If I had my way, I'd make it twenty-five dollars an hour. That's not going to happen and I understand that. But to even have a serious discussion about any alternative other than immediately, as soon as possible now, increasing minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour, to me is unconscionable. So, um, I could say a lot more. I, you know, I, the, um, the statistics bear out the truth of it and that is that if you increase someone's wage, it increases the quality of life for everyone. There may be some short-term fallout for some business owners, but the long-term and the, and the short-term for the workers is what's important. So, um, I'll leave it at that for just now.
Could we go to the, um, the slide about business concerns? The one about, that's titled "Business Concerns." Okay. Maybe that's not the one. But my, the point I want to make is, so the, the issue was raised by people who were concerned that, um, you know, there's, there's overhead in having to change the minimum wage and dealing with Medicare and Social Security and all that stuff. Um, I get that piece. What I don't get is why would they want to do it twice? You know, once at fourteen dollars an hour and once at fifteen dollars an hour. It seems to me it makes sense to, to just do it, you know, once, um, from just a, a cost perspective. Um, but basically, I'm going to support alternative B because I think it's the right thing to do. Um, I agree with, um, council member Penrose. I think twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars is probably more of what we need to sort of solve the, the, the economic issues that we have. Um, but I think fifteen is a good start and I, I, I just don't see the point in, um, you know, delaying that, you know, for the, for the overhead reasons and, um, for the reasons that, you know, why would we not want to put more money in people's pockets now, which hopefully they would spend locally in other businesses, right? So I, I, I think it could actually create, you know, some economic stimulus. And I think there's data out there that supports that. So, um, I don't see the point in staging it. Um, I think it may be tough right away, but I think, you know, you can adjust over time and mitigate it with, you know, probably some price increase. Um, but I, I think also, um, having all our businesses pay fifteen dollars an hour is sort of a, sort of a, a good mission statement too, sort of a branding thing. Like, you know, we look out for our employees here in Half Moon Bay and we believe everybody should, you know, share, you know, in our community's prosperity. Oh, I think that's, that's a good mission. So, um, I'm going to join, uh, council member Penrose in, in supporting alternative B at this time.
I too will support option B, alternative B. There's trade-offs in everything, okay? Uh, I think, uh, this staff report is, is one of the most thorough staff reports I've ever seen. It's really very impressive. Um, and it lays out exactly what, what's going on in the county, in this, in, uh, in the country. Um, I agree with council member Penrose that, uh, even fifteen dollars an hour is, is not a living wage in, in Half Moon Bay, but it's a start. I understand the business concerns, but what it really amounts to is that some, uh, prices for services and, uh, goods are going to go up a little bit, okay? But you have to weigh that against the fact that there are people who can't afford to live here. And, uh, to me, it's just a no-brainer. Um, the council adopted as one of its priorities fifteen-dollar minimum wage. So let's do it. And so I support alternative B.
You know, I was just thinking to myself, um, when I was around eighteen, I was getting paid ten bucks an hour to shovel snow or anything I was doing. And here it is, forty-five years later, and we're having to think about fifteen dollars an hour with that much time elapsed. Um, you know, for me, it's a pure humanity issue personally. And I hate to get rhetorical, but for me, I'd feel inhumane not to at least support a fifteen dollar per hour. And I am personally happy to pay any business in the city of Half Moon Bay fifteen percent above any price they have for products to help support them paying employees fifteen dollars. So yes, alternative B. I would support. Thanks.
Yeah, so I, I also, uh, you know, it's, it's always interesting to me when government takes the role of, of saying what should be done in private industry. That makes me, it always makes me slightly nervous. Um, but i- in this particular instance, you know, fifteen dollars an hour, to be able to live in this area is, is kind of at least the, you know, as we've talked about, there's, uh, it's, it's something that we should be doing and I agree with the humane, the humane aspect of that. Um, so I also, I also feel like a- alternative B is a very good option. I, I like that we are giving ti- first of all, I like the outreach that we did. Very much appreciative of that. And, uh, Kristalyn, I really appreciate you being a part of that process in a major way. Um, and then, uh, I like, I like not starting, you know, like, in the next two weeks. Like, we're giving, we're giving the time period, there's the ability for a fiscal. I mean, I, I would assume that that's most people's fiscal year. Not necessarily, but, but in, it, it gives people time to adjust. And, uh, and, and, you know, my fear, just, just stating it, is, uh, you know, if people do need to raise their rates for what we're getting, I do think that the, the general Half Moon Bay public will be fine with that. My fear would be is that, you know, the tourism aspect, which the town really relies on, um, might have an adverse reaction to it. But that being said, I, I, I still think that the, the outweighing of making sure that people are getting paid a decent wage or a fifteen-dollar-an-hour wage is of higher priority than, than, uh, than that. So I think everything's good. Uh, so that's my perspective.
Does anybody else want to say anything or do we have a motion?
Is a motion needed?
I, I don't think so. I think the direction is very clear on how we need to proceed. Um, uh, alternative B is unanimous, uh, from your comments and, uh, also just moving quickly. I, I think benefits the businesses because it, it gives them that clarity of what they've got to prepare for in the coming year. Um, so we'll be working, staff will be working with our, our attorney's office to, um, bring back a draft ordinance as soon as possible. Um, you know, I hate doing this, but I, we're going to set a goal of getting it back to you at the, the meeting in January for first reading, um, which again, provides the businesses with clarity and time to prepare themselves. Um, so we'll take that, that direction and we'll be back, uh, hopefully soon with a draft ordinance. I just want to take a moment to recognize Victor and Jonathan and their hard work on this. I think, as, as been stated, I think this is really a model in how you do public policy. You do the research, you do the outreach and all of that information is available for you to make the right decision for our city. And so I just appreciate the work they've done. Um, I also want to shout out Miriam Salazar, who is an intern in the city manager's office, who has also been very helpful in this project. And with her school schedule and family schedule, she couldn't be here tonight. But, uh, she's also been a really key member of our team, so we're grateful to her as well. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to commission and committee updates. Does anybody have anything they want to discuss? Uh, and then any items for future, uh, discussion or possible agenda items?
Just want to test the waters here. So, um, I've received a request from, uh, Sabrina Brennan. Uh, would like the city to consider a resolution, um, that basically states that, um, any athletic competition that happens on, you know, public property in the city limits, um, you know, that there will be, um, pay equity, you know, between women and men who are, who are competing in those. In other words, not, not allow, um, you know, men or women, you know, be paid differently. I won't elaborate there. Um, so I'd, I'd like to maybe, uh, agendize a discussion, a future discussion about that. There is going to be legislation about that, um, in Sacramento, this session is my understanding. And, um, the point of coming to Half Moon Bay is they would like Half Moon Bay to lead the way by adopting a resolution, you know, on this issue, um, as part of that, that legisl- I think it's actually a package of bills that'll be moving forward. So I just wanted to raise that and see if people were interested in considering that, having a discussion.
I think it's a great idea. I think in terms of the, um, place Half Moon Bay holds and international surfing competitions, that us putting that bright light on it, um, would be terrific and hopefully other locations would also follow suit. So I think it's a fantastic opportunity to take a, be a leader in that.
There is a, a resolution basically already written up that, you know, we could consider. And I could share that with staff if you're interested in moving, you know.
Yeah, I'd love to just move right, if there's a resolution, consider.
Just do it.
Sounds like a worthwhile discussion. Yeah, let's, let's do that. Anybody else? All right. Uh, city council reports?
I, I, I again want to say thank you to staff. When we had our strategic planning session, when was it? In March? This was the last item put on our strategic plan. And it was thanks to a very forward-thinking council and a very agreeable staff. And since March, our staff has done some amazing things. This, this being one of the best. And thank you, thank you, thank you.
So, um, I, I'm on the San Mateo County Flooding and Sea Level Rise Resiliency. I don't know what we call ourselves now. Anyway, it's of January one, we're going to become a district, an official district. Um, yeah, it was established by legislation. Right now, we're just sort of the, the board in waiting. But we will become a, a, a district January one. And at our recent meeting, um, we, um, directed staff to sign a lease for, uh, office space. Um, basically at the corner, I like this, on the corner of El Camino and, uh, Beauvee, which is right next to Highway ninety-two, so great access to those facilities. They will have conference room and stuff. And, um, the first week in January, we're going to interview candidates to be the, um, chief executive officer. So, um, we've, we've got contracts in place for, you know, financing and office space and insurance and all that stuff. And so we, we will, you know, in the first quarter of, um, 2020, become a, a real, a real deal. So that's, that's my report.
The Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE, uh, on which board I sit, is going to be considering, uh, the proposal of Mayor Licardo from San Jose to explore, uh, municipalizing or the many different terms, but to make PG&E, um, be a community or customer-owned utility. And I don't know if you noticed it, but we all approved a letter tonight, which basically says that the city council also thinks that PG&E should be a, uh, a customer-owned utility. And, uh, as all of you who experienced the last, uh, uh, public service power shut-offs know, PG&E has not been very responsible with, uh, taking care of its, uh, facilities. So that discussion is going to be at the PCE board meeting, um, on, uh, Thursday. And prior to that, uh, the, uh, there'll be a subcommittee meeting of the, uh, resiliency committee of PCE to talk about what we're going to do with the ten million dollars that we have allocated for resiliency. Things like, uh, battery backup at the library and, uh, aid to people in medical need, that, that kind of thing. uh, aid to people in medical need, that, that kind of thing. So that's, that's going on. And then tomorrow at three, at two o'clock at the library, the Elected Officials, uh, Protecting California Association is going to have a press conference to try to urge President, uh, Governor Newsom, uh, to stop any new fossil fuel, uh, plants, uh, and also to not allow any fossil fuel, um, utilities within twenty-five hundred feet of, uh, public space. So that's a couple of, uh, environmentally sensitive things that are happening.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it too late to add a future meeting item? Is it too late to add a future meeting item since we passed that agenda item?
All right.
Mayors discretion.
Sorry?
Go for it.
I know I've mentioned this to staff and talked to Public Works, but based on our PG&E outages, we learned a lot about how much extra, um, fuel we have for emergency generators, especially for diesel to operate the emergency generators, and then regular gas for city-owned vehicles, which we'll need. And we really only have about a week's worth of diesel, so I would love to, um, get some, uh, you know, a little bit of research and ideas on, you know, what it would take to, um, you know, build, uh, an excess storage, um, tank for diesel fuel, so we'll have it there for emergency, so we'd have more than a week's worth, because in a big disaster boy, we're going to need some of that extra fuel, so.
That's not the way to go. The way to go is solar with a battery backup.
Well, that could take time, so in lieu of that, we might need, uh, both. We might need both options to be developing simult, I mean, sustainability and emergency pieces, you know? It's not like they're mutually exclusive, but I think we learned some, uh, pretty, uh, illuminating details about what our surpluses really are, and it wasn't an emergency, so, um, just something to put on our agenda and maybe see what other cities are trying to do around that. Thanks.
Yeah, that sounds like a good topic for, for our goal-setting meeting, you know, because there's obviously different perspectives on how to get there, but sustainability is obviously the overarching subject, and then we can talk about some of the solutions that we want to put forth. So, great topic, yeah, thank you.
I just want to make one other comment. I'm so thrilled we're having the first of many fix-it clinics, you know? That really floats my boat. Thank you.
Anything else, anyone? All right, great meeting. This meeting is adjourned.